Did you get my email?
Uh, yes, and I responded. I gave him a call at this point.
Okay, great.
Um, still a little...
He's a little hard. He really is. I kinda toned it down for you a little bit, but...
Bill Satterfield.
Yeah.
We have a solution, you just...
Well, John, yeah.
We'll see what we can do.
He thought it was arbitrary. Whoever was out there, I didn't believe it.
Yeah, yeah.
And he gives us instructions how to work these things.
This now begins the December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, open work session for the Wycomico County Council. First item on the agenda is the watershed implementation plan. Of course, we have Director Public Works, Wesley Young with us, and City Executive Mayor Matt Hager. And Keith, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Where would you like to start, John?
I'm gonna turn things over to Matt, and Keith and I will probably chime in along the way as we provide our update.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Members of the Council. We have a PowerPoint. Just wanna start by saying, in two thousand and ten, after decades of voluntary efforts to restore Chesapeake Bay, the United States Marine Water Protection Agency established pollution load limits to restrict nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediments from entering the bay. With that, all of the states within the Chesapeake Bay watershed were affected by this, and including Maryland's twenty-three counties and Baltimore City, were instructed to prepare watershed implementation plans. With a final implementation target date of 2025. And with those, the targets established for the county don't include the city of Salisbury, as the city of Salisbury already regulates stormwater management and has set, and the state has set, a separate nutrient target for that jurisdiction. The following sectors are the focus of this effort, and one of which being urban, which would be taken care of by through stormwater retrofits and other projects associated with that. The other being a septic system sector, which would be achieved through pumpouts, upgrading existing septic systems to denitrification systems or pretreatment, and connections to the public or community system. The other sector being wastewater treatment plants, which is responsibility of the individual municipal jurisdictions to upgrade their existing plants to enhance the nutrient reduction. To date, Delmar, as well as Fruitland, have already met their goals for that, 2025. Agriculture is also another sector, but it's coordinated more by the state, and at that level, they're projected to meet the target by 2025. The county will concentrate on mostly the urban and septic system sectors to meet our goals, as well as some projects focusing on agriculture as well. Beginning in FY two thousand and fourteen, the county budgeted about $200,000 per year for the past three years as part of the capital improvement budget, of which accounting with technical assistance and support from the Chesapeake, or Center for Water Protection, the water education for teachers, another partner being Chesapeake Bay Trust, Fred's in the Nanicoke, and the Wycomico River Creek Watchers. We have leveraged an additional $651,000 from state and nonprofit organizations to assist in reducing these nitrogens and sediments from entering the, our waterways. And grant funding is being used to help with the cost of design and implementation of eighteen stormwater retrofit projects underway in the county. Our stormwater retrofit selection criteria, the purpose of it, to be, to select projects to maintain and improve existing facilities with cost-saving measures, designed to maximize opportunities for public education, outreach, and to reduce costs by utilizing public-owned land, select practices without, with reduced long-term maintenance costs, and to improve the appearance of our existing facilities. Phase-one projects, what we have now, consist of eight practices with six very high, high visible publicly-owned properties. The projects currently that I'm about ready to go over are fully funded by Chesapeake Bay Trust grants and county funds, and the construction is also fully funded by DNR grants. One of these projects is located at the Upper Ferry. This one was completed in two thousand and fourteen and is a, by retention pond. We won in Pemberton Park that, with two practices, and that's currently been awarded to, bid has been awarded to construct that.
Matt, could you explain what all this is supposed to be, the different parts of everything? Going back to Upper Ferry.
Sure. That's a bio-retention on basically slowing down the runoff instead of, before it was straight discharge into Wycomico River. And, yeah, the water going into the rip raft, thereby slowing it down, reducing the sediment load, sediment, slowing down the water, allowing it to infiltrate or, or absorb through, by slowing it down. And then with the plantings, they'll also absorb a lot of the nutrients from entering into the Wycomico River. You can see those plantings, they look, they're much more established now. That was, I believe, the day after planting.
If you look at a newer development, you'll see they have ponds, or they have some sort of stormwater treatment. The road leaving the Upper Ferry, even the little building, we call that untreated impervious surface, was Matt was saying, is that runs off directly to the river. By putting in this bio-retention, the water has a chance to, instead of just going in a ditch or sheet flowing directly to the water, to the, to the river, it can then go in here, slowly infiltrate down. The plants are selected to help pull pollutants out of the water. So it's not just what's in the TMDL, the whip, the nitrogen phosphorus. It's also heavy metals, it's also other, other contaminants, so the plants serve, serve a role. A lot of these practices are very similar in nature. They take untreated impervious, they then capture it. The name, you know, we say stormwater retrofit, sometimes we take an existing practice, such as we'll touch on at the airport, where it was an older stormwater structure, and we are improving it to have a higher removal efficiency.
Thank you. Pemberton Park bio-retention is very similar to the Upper Ferry, however, we, there's a four-bay that, that would reduce sediment even more before entering into that bio-retention section. That's the top one that you see. The other bio-swale is, is a smaller device that is very similar, but just is incorporates a, a swale as well. There's a airport pond, sand filter, that has been awarded construction bid, and is, will be underway shortly, pending the, the weather.
There's a big airport sign over here.
Yes.
The brick's on.
Yeah, and that's in between the airport road and the parking lot. And it's, it's completely overgrown, and is a tremendous opportunity to, to, to show what we're doing for the environment.
So the, the beautiful part about this particular BNP is that we already have the infrastructure draining to this location, so, you know, we're looking for low-hanging fruit. One of the difficulties is being near an airport, we have to get FAA approval. You don't want any, any sort of setup where wild fowl could land. You know, it's also something to consider if we start implementing practices at schools. You don't want a ten-foot-deep pond near an elementary school, but you could have a low-impact rain garden or bio-retention that could also then be an educational feature as well. So that, that's at least trying to explain where our heads at when we're thinking about these practices.
This next project is at Shoemaker Park, and consists of two practices, one being, again, a bio-retention, and the other are similar practices. We have another designed at Purdue Stadium, very large one that would do quite a bit of work for us, and another one that has been designed for a solid waste facility.
Is the runoff tested?
Um, not, well, at, probably at the solid waste one, we'll probably test it, 'cause we test a bunch of other facilities, but typically no.
So how do you know it's working?
That's, that's a great question. As, the way the bay program works right now is that we're not under severe regulations, anywhere close. Salisbury has what they call a phase-two. Phase-one is for the bigger cities. They, they require testing stations to make sure that the efforts are working. Basically, we go on design and just what the research shows that it works. Does it actually work, you know? For us, it's more of a paper game. How many acres of impervious do we have treated by different practices? And based on that, you know, it's a land-use game. Maybe, maybe Keith can chime in a bit on that, but, um...
Yes, I'd like to add to it. As part of the due diligence with spending public money and looking at these improvements, as well as trying to make sure that we're getting the best efficiency or return on investment, we are doing geotechnical work. So the geotechnical work, one component of that is not only looking at the soil profile, but also looking at the current nutrient load, the current phosphorus load. So if there is a model that's less than sane that we work with, that we know the load going into it, and the projected results coming out of it. But I think it's a good idea that if we can continue getting county allocations as part of the capital improvement program, that we begin testing. Absolutely, because we're just working on an efficiency that a model is giving, a systemic efficiency that's one-size-fits-all. We may in fact be getting increased efficiency or reductions in nutrients that the county's not making credit for. And while as expensive as it is to remove a pound of nitrogen, a pound of phosphorus, it's a consideration we'll keep working with the county as well as Public Works on to find out what the best program is gonna be. So yes, there is some testing in the front end of it, but the results, we have not tested yet. We're one-practicing with Upper Ferry, so I think that is something we'll be moving to.
Okay, good point.
But for the state, the state, as you said, kinda cares more about the paper, you know, the, the, you know, impervious surfaces, all that kinda stuff. So they, their metrics aren't based on results, they're based on inputs, not outputs.
Right now, yes. And it even goes beyond the state. It's the, it's the whole Chesapeake Bay program, which is the six states, DC, the EPA, and all the partners that are, that have stake in it as well. One of the, while, while it is a paper game, one of the ultimate things would be to install water quality testing gauges in the different water bodies. Now, we wouldn't put it at the end of each pond or bio-retention, but it would be one in the Wycomico, in the Nanicoke, in the Pokemoke, and so forth, helping to gauge what is coming from the river. And is it Wycomico, or is it, say, Conawingo? So there's, there's different, different tests with that. But right now, yeah, it's, it's a paper game. The state will have a certain criteria to submit to the Chesapeake Bay program, and then they will put it in their model, and then they will determine if what we've proposed is done enough, or where we need to go from there. It could be that their model shows that we're good, but the testing stations that they put in show that they're still impaired waters. You're still gonna have some rivers that are, or creeks that are gonna be impaired, but other ones that, that are clean. And I, I think it's our goal right now is to show on paper and, you know, with, with pretty photos, that we're moving forward with, I guess, an intelligent way of treating, treating the pollutants here in the county.
Yes. Some faith, we have four, currently have four practices with hot, four highly visible publicly-owned properties for phase-one projects. First of which is located at East Lode League in Winter Place Park, which you're reusing, utilizing a bio-retention pond slash swale for that particular project. Another is located at the detention center, or will be located there. In that case, we'll be utilizing, it's called a shallow wetland. Another is, will be located at the Rhodes Division Complex, which will be utilizing bio-retention for that as well. And that's basically collecting most of the runoff that's from the paved section of that facility. And the final one, located at Warwick Community College, again, will be utilizing shallow wetland for that project. There's quite a bit of room there, so it left a, a good opportunity to really design a highly efficient project at that location. Some other projects that we'll be working on are Wycomico County Tourism Center, looking at North Thirteen. With that design, which is fully designed, completed, will have five retrofits, stormwater retrofit practices, and is ready to roll whenever construction funds are available for that. The airport, in addition to the sand filter project that we have going now, we're, will be, we submitted for a grant to Chesapeake Bay Trust for that, for design and improvement of an existing ditch along Lawson Switch, located between Airport and Mount Hermon Road. And, yeah, sure.
So the, the other one listed on there, San Domingo, came up earlier in our conversations during the audit. This is a project that involves demolishing existing impervious area. Again, it was about three-quarters of an acre, and we're gonna plant three and a half acres of trees there. We plan to partner with various organizations. Right now, we're looking, the San Domingo area drains to the Nanicoke, so the Nanicoke Watershed Alliance is gonna help us get volunteers. Also, I think it's the Lions Club, Sharp Town Lions Club. We've had talks with them about working as well. So with, with each of these projects, where we can find partnerships and ways of, you know, getting good press for everybody and making our dollars go further, we will. One of the things mentioned earlier with the grants, so over the past three budget cycles, we've been given about $600,000, and through the efforts of the county brought in over, over double that, you know, yeah, with, with help, you know, from county staff as well as partners, such as the Center for Watershed Protection, who's been helping us out significantly with, with designs and, and things like that. So going forward, one of the things that I think we're, we're lacking is a comprehensive watershed management plan. This is looking at a drainage area and looking at, all right, where are the best places? We have lots of rural ditches in the county that we can retrofit. You know, I like the idea, if we look at some of our dams and ponds, you have a lot of water draining to that one, one location, you could put in wetland benches in those areas. One of the things that, the thing that's rarely talked about is the maintenance that goes into putting in all these practices. So I, I personally would like to get away from a lot of these smaller practices that we're, we're showing here. It's a great first step, but who's gonna maintain those? In, in an ideal world, we can go for the projects that have the biggest bang for the buck, and, such as retrofitting our ponds and our dams to, to provide whip, whip treatment. And then these, these watershed management plans can help us with that. Another, another thing to consider is urban service districts. This is one of the major things, 'cause we, we've been talking about urban stormwater for the most part with impervious surfaces, but with the septic side of things. We have failing septics throughout the county. There's several ways of going at it. We can try to pump it out. The new, what they call BAT's, Best Available Technology, those are pricey, and you need additional drain field locations.
And you have limitations of a lot of older development, such as those areas that offer pollution city roads, that are on very small lot sizes. So they're not gonna lend themselves to being able to do a septic system replacement. The real practical solution is, a long-term solution, is looking at connecting them to some type of public or community system, whether it's partnering with a jurisdiction or a county, exploring a water source.
So, so while I, while I put urban service district, that's just one way of doing it. The county could create a private treatment or, or develop our own treatment plant and try to treat large neighborhoods. One of the difficulties with that, and, I mean, it, it can also help from an economic standpoint, if places that couldn't get sewer before, but then we run the risk, and, and it somewhat ties with, say, the mega poultry farms, is that the more impervious you put, you need more stormwater treatment for that. And under current Maryland regs, one of the difficulties that, that, not just Wycomico, but all, all Maryland municipalities will face, is that if you build perfectly to the Maryland regulations, there's still a net increase of nitrogen and phosphorus and sediment. So each new development, while, while, you know, we're pro-development, we have to be thinking, we need a regional solution to counter that. If they meet the state laws dead-on, we're gonna have to make it up somehow, so...
Just like the situation we're in today. All the development that's occurred since 1985 has complied with stormwater regulations, however, we're still at a deficit, a reductionary, and we've got to reduce a certain amount of phosphorus, and that will continue.
We could be getting, we may be able to kill two birds with one stone, if we develop our own wastewater treatment authority and have our own standalone facility. Now, whether it's gonna be a standalone facility that's actually in that area, in that community, or whether a decentralized system where it's actually pumped, and the county decides to transfer it to maybe the Public Works area for treatment, which is the most feasible process, in your opinion?
Probably the cheapest would be connecting to an existing system.
But there may not be, I mean, not Hermon Road area, things like that.
Yeah, we, we would have to look, because like, like Keith was mentioning earlier with the geotechnical analysis, you can't, you cannot put a treatment plant just anywhere. So we need to make sure that, that if it's discharged into a water body, that that's, that's okay, if we're doing some sort of field irrigation that the soils and, and, you know, we're not above the paleo channel. So considerations like that would need to be made if it's near, and I guess where I, what I was thinking of is, is if it's near a municipality that has existing services connected to those, and...
Well, there may, see, the municipality's gonna require annexation, and for annexation, you're gonna have to have permission from the, from property owners, and they may not wanna cooperate with that. I didn't know if maybe this is a solution we had to look at among ourselves.
That could be one of the challenges moving forward, is that right now, as it currently stands, and I'll speak on behalf of this...
Can you use the mic?
I'll speak about what I know best, which is the city of Salisbury. Their current policy that's been in play for many years is that a function of service is annexation or pre-annexation agreement.
Right.
You are correct. The extension of urban service districts really has not occurred over the past twenty to thirty years. However, the cities and towns, especially the ones with the larger wastewater treatment plants, including Salisbury, Fruitland, Delmar, they're all under the same constraints that we are to reduce nitrogen and phosphorus. So I think this discussion itself lends itself to the broader discussion of how are there any potential partnerships that we can enter into between the county and the municipalities using the wastewater treatment plant and maybe looking at different ways to fund the infrastructure that would be a win-win situation for both. Going back to your previous question, John, I think when you're looking at the regional, a potential for a regional water and sewer authority, I'm gonna expound a little bit upon what Weston was saying, I think you have to look at a variety of different factors. One being the proximity to existing city or town services. The other is looking at whether or not you have soils, if you're not close to existing city services or town services, soils that are capable of handling the spray irrigation or affluent, or you gotta find a local water body to discharge in. So I think what hypothetically might work in one area, might not be able to be a one-size-fits-all approach, it might be a hybrid. However, I think as we continue with these endeavors, those evaluations will be taking place.
I think it's a good time to begin. I mean, you know, we do recognize that we do need the whip credits and the better use of it. You'd suggest that we should be doing larger projects anyway.
Yes.
So it's, it's really, like you said, it's whether you put it there on location, it sounds like it may have to be, and you call it decentralized, don't you? Even though it sounds like it's supposed to be centralized, but you've taken it to another location, right? Decentralized, when I use that term, it's actually transporting the, the septic, the sewage or whatever, from location to a central location.
Yeah. I would almost say if you're pulling it, if you're pulling it from multiple locations, you're, you're centralizing it.
Yeah.
But, but compared to taking it to, say, Salisbury's treatment plant, we are decentralizing it. We are not bringing it all to one location, so... Continuing with this, you know, we, we're always looking to expand our partnerships. That, that helps our money go further, and it also helps, you know, we all have different goals and objectives, so working with the private sector, and if, you know, engineering firms are looking to, you know, help us with designing some of these, we'll always be looking for that as well. And any ideas, we'll, we'll be glad to, but I think the comprehensive watershed plans will help us, direct us in terms of stormwater retrofits and, and so forth. And then there's, there's been some work in, you know, I, I'm not as familiar with it, but there has been some work with the urban tree canopy for the county, and we can, we should be able to get some credit for that, but it's also like with the San Domingo project, if we can find opportunities to expand that or encourage, that, that helps us with our water quality goals. One of the best, we'll say, BMP's best management practices is a land-use conversion, taking from, say, paved to trees. Now, that's not feasible everywhere, and in our metro core, you know, we, we probably wanna focus, you know, and that's where planning and zoning comes in, putting our, our industrial park in one area rather than all over the place. So the urban tree canopy is something we wanna look into as well, among our other options. So with that, we'll, we'll be glad to entertain any other questions you may have.
Any questions?
One of these days, Wycomico County's gonna have to consider getting in the water and sewer business.
You know, I, I had a, at the Chamber of Commerce, somebody mentioned to me that we're the only county that does not have a water and sewer authority.
Of course, if you talk to Somerset, they'll ask you, why do you wanna get into it?
Exactly.
Why do you want to?
They may have jumped the gun, yes.
Can we get a copy of the presentation at some point?
Oh, sure, sure. We'll send it today.
Y'all did a good job.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Well, with Council's indulgence and Mr. Hall, I did talk to Mr. Lennox, what we'd like to do is to move forward with the discussion on the chicken houses, since we do have a group here that we know is, is here specifically for that topic.
Very respectful.
Then we'll come back and do the comprehensive plan, if you don't mind.
Good job.
Give us, give us, give us five or 10 minutes. Thank you. Mr. Lennox? Appreciate you coming in. This, this part of the agenda, we're, of course, discussing the regulations on the mega farm poultry operations, and I guess what Wycomico County's standards are currently, and if there's any planning or anything in the future. I know Bill Satterfield's here from the marva poultry industry. Bill, any, any input you'd like, you can join us at the table if you'd like to, and certainly we'll encourage any input. Jack, I'll let you begin.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the chance to provide more of an overview, I suppose, and, and I'll take your direction as far as how, how far you would like to go with this, and what sort of detail you would like to. And it's always appreciated when folks like Mr. Satterfield are at the table in the representation of the poultry industry, which is, I'm learning more and more every day, is a very... of the poultry industry, which is, I'm learning more and more every day, is a very complicated issue, both of science and with a crossroads of science and time and land use. In terms of Wycomico County's history, and many of you go back with this much further than I, and perhaps have a more intimate knowledge, I can address from a regulatory standpoint that up until about three years ago, Wycomico County did not require a building permit for an agricultural building. And at times, you know, for good or for bad, the definition of terms starts to become even more important as we start to understand the implications of such a public policy. We are a largely agricultural county. Two-thirds of our county is designated under zoning for agricultural use. But as the council well knows, zoning is not everything. And zoning does not reflect a wide variety of other jurisdictions. And those jurisdictions are at the federal level, state level, county level, and then what you get down to, and I know you heard the phrase a while ago, you know, best management practices, the practices of an individual industry, and their own standards, and how they deal with their operations. So when the county took the initiative to require a building permit, it was done primarily not for building code purposes, but we're finding out that that's an important implication as well, not necessarily in this discussion, but for the future of our rural property owners. And when they required the building permit, it was in response to a request from the agricultural community through the Chamber of Commerce and the various groups who were concerned that in Wycomico County, we were not seeing any new poultry houses. And one of the issues that had been identified was the fact that our public works side was getting significant pressure from the Maryland Department of the Environment. And as I've come to understand, MDE actually is an implementing arm for various federal requirements. They were getting a great deal of pressure about stormwater. And we're finding out that the state folks were a little upset with us because we were not enforcing to their standards stormwater requirements. Well, we didn't require stormwater. How were we supposed to? We didn't even have a building permit. So it is kind of ironic that we would have requirements on the board, but folks were either consciously or unconsciously not following them because it's an ag use, I don't need a building permit. We got to the point of having to make sure that MDE standards, and I'll use that broadly because I know, and Mr. Satterfield and I have talked about this, there are a variety of standards. I'll just leave it as environmental. Environmental standards, if we were going to enforce that, if you were a regular standard commercial operation or a residential developer, you would bond those improvements. Bonding is expensive. We wanted to encourage agriculture. We needed a mechanism so that to assure that stormwater is handled properly, the plans are submitted, they're reviewed, they are implemented and signed off on. Well, how do you do that if you don't want to require a bond? The compromise that the executive and council at the time put forth and is on the books now is that you apply for a building permit, you have to deal with all the backup requirements, primarily the stormwater in this instance, and other jurisdictions. And occupancy is held up. So that's the key. So the occupancy permit makes sure, presumably, this is the goal, that the stormwater gets built the way it's supposed to. So again, about three years ago, for the first time, we required building permits for agricultural buildings. No building permit fee is charged. So that's one of the only exemptions you have, and that was voted authorized by this body. So you apply for a building permit. And here's one of the side issues that were not quite anticipated. There's always been a building code. You're always supposed to follow it. But if there's no building permit, things were constructed according to folks' best personal practices. So now, whether it be a pole building, storage building, in otherwise agricultural use, they need to come into building permits, they need to deal with the building code, they need to deal with stormwater. That was probably the most significant change with the advent of additional poultry house regulations. So that procedure is in place. There is a state role, obviously. Prior to that, the last significant change, and I'll say significant based purely on math, county doubled its setback in 2004. Fifty feet went to 100. Not a lot of discussion. It was doable. The industry accepted it. That was the only change. I had had a question put to me recently that you may have read about, that said, can you give me a copy of the county's poultry development requirements? And I said, I can tell you what they are, 100 feet from the property line. So that's where we are today with the building process, the relationship we have through Public Works Office for stormwater that is signed off and inspected, the relationship that they have to make sure that MDE checks off the various boxes that they need to in terms of stormwater. When we, our most recent discussion among us about, I guess, six months ago, had to do with whether or not we would look to further regulate poultry, poultry specifically, because that was the issue that was asked. And at the time, we were looking at it very much on a residential home basis. We all know, and we have, you know, depending on the council agenda, we can come at this from a different perspective. We spent a lot of time through the years talking about whether or not we should allow and to what extent residential subdivisions in agriculture. And the focus is on the property owner building those homes in areas that we verbally say is an agricultural area. But we know that there are conflicts. There are potential conflicts between an agricultural use and residential. We have a right to farm act. That is on the books. That's a disclosure we put forward. So from time to time, if residential subdivisions are booming, we have a lot of discussion about whether or not it's appropriate to put those next agricultural uses. We have not seen a new subdivision significantly out in the ag district in a number of years now. The issue has clearly switched. We have not had the discussion before about how many homes. That is not, how many poultry houses? That has not been discussed previously. That's a new issue for us. And so as we go forward, you meet stormwater. If you're setback 100 feet from the property line, if you get a building permit, that's the law of our land, they proceed. Question now is whether it's appropriate for us and in what form, to take a look at that a little bit closer and address any other questions that perhaps have not been fully vetted in the past. The particular issue, the particular project in front of us has 13. Again, there's no magic number. It is the most intensive we've had. It is in an area that is not close to, and close to is a relative issue, obviously. It's not right next door to homes. The closest home, about 500 feet. And then the density not very high beyond that. So the issue, as we discussed it six months ago, perhaps is one now of scale more than it is, how far should you be setback from someone who was invested in their own home?
Right. Council questions?
Joe?
I've heard this phrase eight times a day, mega farm.
Describe...
I did not use that, Mr. Hall.
I know you did. But I keep hearing that.
Yes.
And I don't have a clear definition. You know, if you've got two poultry houses here, and somebody builds six down the road, you consider the six a mega farm? If you've got 13 here, and somebody builds one with 50 down the road, which one's considered a mega farm? So I keep hearing this, and I find it disturbing that I keep hearing this word mega farm, because I don't think there's a clear definition of it.
I didn't, I have not used the word mega farm. And frankly, and I agree with you, I find it derogatory. And I find that if someone is opposing anything, and I'm just talking about poultry house, and they want to oppose, you know, the two-story house next door to them, it could be the mega house or the mega farm.
While I was sitting here, within about two miles of where I live, I can count up to 24 poultry houses that's either out of service or disappeared in the past 10 or 15 years. No chickens in them at all. Bill, how many do you think there actually is that's disappeared in Wycomico County over the past 10 or 15 years? Because people keep saying the chicken industry is growing here, but it's really not growing. I think we've seen a lot of poultry houses out of service, capacity-wise.
I do not have any county-specific data, but peninsula-wide, I'm looking for some facts here. We collect data as DPI at the end of each year.
Right.
On how many chicken houses are in service.
Uh-huh.
And the capacity of all those houses.
Uh-huh.
And if you will bear with me a minute as I pick up my papers here.
I just keep hearing that everybody's saying, oh, the poultry industry is expanding, it's expanding, it's expanding. I really don't think we've probably got a lot of more capacity now than we had 20 years ago, do we?
It is not growing tremendously. I think over the last 30 years, cumulatively, if my memory's right, there was 37% increase in capacity. Less 1% per year, basically.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of houses go out of business. There was a big housing boom in the late 1970s and early 1980s. A lot of houses were being built.
Some of them are even gone.
Yeah, they're gone. So, I mean, you're talking 35 years ago for some of them. So they're going out of service. And I think a lot of the construction now is just catching up. We had some bad years in the chicken industry four or five years ago, and there was very little construction, very little, throughout Del Marva. And things have changed. The industry's in better shape. The demand for chicken remains strong. Interest rates are at a record-low level. The chicken companies have been offering incentives to get capacity so they can meet their customers' needs. And we're seeing a growth now that I don't think is going to continue.
That's what I was my next question.
Because the plants are only designed to accommodate a certain number of birds that move through. I'm not aware of any idea of putting in a new chicken processing plant. So we're in a catch-up mode, I think.
And Council Doug?
Yeah, I'm sitting here listening to Jack. He's always well-informed and always has a lot to say that I didn't realize. It made me go back to think of water and sewer. We're kind of behind times, water and sewer. We just recently started requiring building permits for chicken houses. And I think I remember when I was younger, seeing double-decker, triple-decker chicken houses. And some of us talked about that at MACO. I know I talked to Ernie about it, and apparently they don't do that any longer. Is there a standard to follow? Do you have your eyes set on something that we can follow, other than the setback and the stormwater management ponds?
From my standpoint, the issue, and I know we trip over the words occasionally, setback and separation. We've also used the phrase in the past, reverse setback, when we're talking about subdivisions. You know, besides putting people unnoticed when they go to build a new house, that there's a farm next door and they're allowed to, you know, have the experience of living next to a farm, that there may be an interest in having an increased separation sometimes, you know, recognizing who's there first and then doing a setback. I think part of the issue that we've all heard, and I think we've gotten calls over the last year or so, is from someone who went to build a house in the rural areas and were very careful. They looked around and didn't see any poultry houses. They didn't smell anything, and they went ahead and built their house.
Right.
And for some reason, I think it never occurred to them oftentimes, next to a very nice neighborhood, that someone might build a chicken house. We may be looking at additional separations, additional buffers. DPI themselves have discussed, you know, good neighbor standards, that, you know, we should all probably take advantage, take a look at and try to put into effect. From my own standpoint, it's been difficult, as folks have asked us for information. How many people have applied? Who's applied? And then the big question, who's the integrator? Personally, and in my records and my open records, we have no idea. So somehow, a relationship or a discussion more in the integrator level than just the person coming in for the building permit might help us deal with some of those additional good neighbor standards.
And I probably shouldn't bring this up, but chicken houses catch on fire, and they're large buildings, and I'm surprised there's not a sprinkler code for chicken houses.
Any other questions?
Bill, we had a meeting about six months ago that Jack brought up. You were going to talk to the integrators about, you know, best management practices, setbacks, buffers and things like that, and try to get them on board so we didn't have to legislate. How did that go?
We give a little history for those who are not at the meeting. We, as an organization, about 10 years ago adopted a guideline, voluntary guideline, best management practices for good neighbor relations. About a year ago, we started looking at it again, to figure, is it time to take another look and make some of the changes? We worked that through a group of growers and chicken company new housing guys and live production managers. Came up with a set of recommendations, which we then presented to our Board of Directors of DPI, which was approved in April. There were some suggestions we have further improvements. They were adopted in June of this year, and that's where we stand today. On our 50-member board, we have representatives from each of the chicken companies. And during the discussions and during the votes, there was no opposition to what we had, except after the April meeting, some people said, we need to do this and this, and those were adopted. So we have shared those with the chicken companies, and they seem to be on board. Now, again, these are voluntary guidelines. These are not mandates or restrictions that we legally can enforce. We met with the heads of four of the five chicken companies, and they indicated that they supported these best management practices, but for a variety of reasons, including legal counsel advice, they did not want to have an MAU with Wycomico County to say that we, as a company, will adhere to these voluntary guidelines. So it kind of died right there. The company were not interested.
But you said four of the five.
I forget which one we didn't talk to in person.
Right. Okay. Because the one that's apparently the integrator on these 13 capacity farm, I was wondering if they were the one, apparently they're not adhering to these guidelines that DPI has set down, right? The 100-foot setback that the county has, it isn't as much as what these guidelines were, correct?
The county's requirements are less than what we're recommending.
Right.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We're recommending a 400-foot setback with a buffer, an environmental buffer. And if you can believe the newspaper story, it was Tyson Foods, which has a contract with the grower. And we talked with the Tyson people at Temperanceville, and they ran it through their legal counsel in Arkansas and said they could not sign it. But they're aware of the guidelines.
But they're not adhering to them.
That I don't know. I have not seen any design work. My limited knowledge about this project is based on one blog and one newspaper story, which probably means I don't have the full story. Can I go back to answering your question about capacity? I did find the sheet. From 1985 until 2014, the number of houses on, the capacity of the houses on Del Marva went up by 37% in 30 years, about 1% as I said. From 1995 until 2014, the number of houses on Del Marva went down by 25%.
Number of houses.
Number of houses. In the last 10 years, the capacity of all the Del Marva houses went down 3%, while the number of operating houses went down 12%. So we're not seeing this expansive growth. And as I say, we're kind of playing catch-up now.
Concentrating.
Yeah. And I don't see this continuing.
And you say capacity. How many chickens per house are we talking about?
We're looking at how many chickens can be placed in all the houses total on Del Marva.
Not just one house?
Not just one house. It's total Del Marva capacity, based on square footage of that.
So you don't know if there's a standard? So you don't know if there's a standard?
Very. I mean, the old houses may have twenty-five thousand birds, a new house may have thirty-six thousand birds. And as we try to collect end-of-the-year, industry-wide data, the best measure is total capacity of all the houses at any one time.
Councilman Kilmer?
Well, as you may have heard during public comments, we had some very specific concerns about the airplanes that operate right near this house. I mean, so I guess maybe for both of you, you know, Jack, is there something in county land use that restricts, you know, buildings by airports? And what is the legal situation, you know, I mean, can, can an airplane operator be sued if, you know, a chicken house is built near an airport and something happens to the chickens? I mean, is that a realist, you know, is that a concern that should worry neighbors, I guess?
Not, not that this is humorous at all, but I've had the reverse question. When we had a subdivision, we had an airport proposed in Pittsfield, and the poultry business said it was going to scare the chickens. And we had, and they had to bring in scientific, you know, information about that. We do not have a setback from airports or single-family homes or for poultry houses.
So if they wanted to, let's just say hypothetically, you did have multi-layered chicken houses, if they wanted to build ten, twenty layers of chicken houses with the airport right here, they still, because of what you had mentioned?
They got what they call a glide slope.
Okay, so there is a glide, what Joe says, a glide slope, and I'm assuming that there's a glide slope around in this particular area?
For, for the Bennett Airport, I'm sure it's different than, than, for example, the Salisbury Airport. We would, if we had questions like that, if someone was going to put in, say, a communication tower, I mean, that's a more likely one, we would require them to get an FAA, MMA certificate. And they would evaluate those, the cone, as it were.
I'm trying to, trying to separate this specific project from the overall position of the county in reference to chicken houses at large. This project specifically, it has gone beyond the point where any type of restrictions can be applied, is that correct?
Grandfathered in? Okay. They, I would like to be able to answer that question simply. They have applied for a permit, they have proceeded based on understanding of the existing regulations, they have spent money and reliance upon those. We have not yet, and I say we being Public Works, as I understand, has not yet approved the stormwater, but it is under review. We have not yet issued a building permit. It has been the county's practice in the past that any time you enacted, say, a moratorium or made additional changes, that you grandfathered those in the system. That's been the practice in the past. If you would look to backdate that further, I would have a very careful discussion with council. I'm sorry, with our attorney.
Legal counsel.
With our attorney, with legal counsel.
Right, okay.
There is, there is an issue that they have relied on, that they have proceeded in reliance upon our existing codes.
Yeah, I would think that by the time you read about it in the paper, they've followed many procedures and probably at great expense.
It is interesting, though, that by the time we read about it in the paper, they had not yet applied with, for a building permit. So there is work upfront. They have since applied.
We've heard about the Paleo Channel today, and I understand the state is involved in this as far as runoff and all. Is the state showing any concerns about Paleo Channel with the permitting and whatever?
I have not heard anything from a state agency specifically about this project, whether it be in regards to the Paleo Channel or surface waters. My understanding, once again, is that they will need to go through, because of the size of this, the CAFO requirements, Bill, to deal with runoff to waters of the state.
So they've not done that? Or they have done that?
I cannot confirm whether they've done that, nor can I confirm whether or not that's a condition of a building permit or a condition of occupancy. That sounds a little odd, but it may be a condition of occupancy. Frankly, I need to learn more about what that federal, down through the state requirement applies to us.
Can I kind of go through requirements for building chicken farms on the state level?
On the state level or on the?
On the state level, what the Maryland Department of the Environment requires.
That's up to John.
I'm sorry.
That's why you're here. That's why you're here.
I'll just kind of lead the conversation.
This is a sheet put together by the Maryland Department of the Environment that outlines the requirements for expanding in new chicken farms. And there are a number of requirements that have to be met. Before starting construction, it's recommended these things be in the process of getting done. General permit for stormwater associated with construction activity, issued by MDE's Water Management Administration. Erosion and sediment control plan approved by the County Soil Conservation District. The third is a stormwater management plan, approved by the local county department of public works or equivalent agency. Waterway construction permit, if the houses are to be located within the one-hundred-year non-tidal floodplain. On top of that, you need to go into another division of MDE, and that deals with the general discharge permit for animal feeding operations. That's the CAFO permit. There are about seven hundred chicken farms on the eastern shore of Maryland. About six hundred of them have CAFO permit covered. So it's not just big farms, it's smaller farms. So you have to submit with the general discharge permit for animal feeding operations application, a basic design of the property and what the houses are going to be like and all that sort of stuff. And you have to have a comprehensive nutrient management plan or a nutrient management plan plus a soil conservation water quality plan to kind of equal out. Now, in that comprehensive nutrient management plan, among the many other things that are required, the applicant has to say that he is meeting nine minimum standards for environmental quality, environmental protection. These are nine required by the EPA, and they're in every CAFO permit across the country or are supposed to be. And they spell out, how are you going to handle the manure? How are you going to handle the carcasses? How are you going to handle the chemicals that may be on the farm? Record-keeping and a few more things. So that's just on the state level. And if you do not get approval from the Maryland Department of the Environment to be covered by the general permit, you legally cannot put birds in that house. So there's a number of steps that have to be done to make sure you're legally constructing, you're protecting the groundwater and the erosion prevention during construction, and then to get birds put into the house. Let's not just go out and throw up a building and start growing chickens like it used to be.
So the size of the farm and the environmental issues and environmental concerns are related to any poultry house, any farm, poultry farm, is defined by state regulations, Maryland Department of the Environment.
Maryland Department of the Environment, I don't think has any interest necessarily in how many houses are built on attractive land.
Right.
As long as the comprehensive nutrient management plan and the stormwater management and all those other factors are met.
So all the protections as far as the environment are concerned, whether it's the Paleo Channel, whether it's the manure, whether it's the wastewater, that's all pretty much safeguarded by the state of Maryland. From a county perspective, then, our responsibility might be more so along the guidelines of the distances between neighboring communities and these farms. Is it, can you oversimplify it to that extent, Jack?
It's bulk type of considerations. You're right. How tall, how short, how far back, how separated from, exactly as opposed to operational.
Yeah, and the size of a farm, the concerns on the size of a farm is more along the environmental issues that the state sort of tries to guarantee. Again, no matter how big a farm is, our biggest concern is how far that last house is from other areas of the community.
And buffers.
And buffers. So that would be our focus as a council, would you think? You'd try to establish those guidelines as far as buffers and distances. And all the other wastewater, manure, and the Paleo Channel are really concerns that are well above our, our control on a state level.
That's the traditional role of the county, as you just described it. I would say that if there were some consensus among the poultry community that there was an ideal number, then we could incorporate that. But I don't know that number, and I don't know how we would determine that number.
Number of houses, you mean?
Yes, number of houses or number of chickens in houses.
I, Billy?
That could change.
Sure.
There's an interesting comment made the other day, was that the reason that you're seeing larger groups of houses, complexes, is simply because of the fact that the stormwater regulations have been very cumbersome or onerous, or whatever you might say.
Yes.
Making it less cost prohibitive, or making it cost prohibitive to have just one or two houses. Is that correct?
That's part of it. The stormwater management requirements for chicken farms are fairly new within the last four or five years. And it's been a learning process, but to develop the stormwater management program requires an engineered design. There's a cost. A lot of cost in moving soil to design the swales and the pond itself. Someone quipped a few years ago, there's more money in moving dirt than in growing chickens because of the expense of doing that. So if you have a certain fixed cost for the stormwater management system, economically it makes more sense to spread it out over a larger number of houses than two or three. So you have a cash flow. So that's part of the reason why we're seeing more houses per farm. And another reason is that the growing practices of the birds have changed. With the antibiotic-free programs catching on, you have fewer birds per house. With the organic production, you have fewer birds per house. So to get the required number of birds, you need more capacity or more houses. So all these factors are playing in why we're seeing more new houses on a farm than we did years ago.
Well, I mean, I do think it's ironic that we've seen a push for stricter environmental regulations that's been enacted in Maryland, but that has had the result of, I don't want to say industrializing farm production, but moving towards larger production because larger operations can handle the expense more. I mean, you talk to farmers in other fields, you know, there's a small organic farmer on the southeast side of town that's having trouble complying with environmental regulations that larger farms don't have that trouble because of their size. So these regulations, which were pushed for by the environmental community, now seem, you know, now we're hearing complaints that, oh, well, now we just see these big, quote-unquote, "industrial," you know, agricultural operations. But that's a result, in my mind, in large part, of the regulations that the state of Maryland has enacted over the years. But maybe that's just me.
Little history, you know, back in the sixties and seventies, the concept of a poultry farm was maybe a couple poultry houses. Mom stayed home, helped take care of the chickens, dad drove a school bus and farmed. You know, most of the poultry houses then were ten thousand capacity, maybe. I think I remember somebody building one in the mid-seventies that was twenty thousand, and everybody was, wow, you know, this is building a great big poultry house there. But that was, that's how the, I guess you can say that's where the mom and pop poultry farms were, you know. Economy of scale, I guess that's what the phrase I hear, you know, it's gotten so big, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't work anymore. So they have to go with, I think we've got one down near Powellville, the guy has built three, three poultry houses on it, and he's discovered out of these three poultry houses that he actually needs another poultry house to make a living.
I think a lot of agricultural lenders won't go below four houses for new projects for poultry houses. They won't lend unless it's four or above.
And with new technology, you don't need a lot of people to run four or five new chicken houses. They're kind of automatic, they're all computer-linked on your gadget, you can be in Florida and pay attention to what's going on, make adjustments. So in terms of industrial, they're really still run by families, even though they're larger in scale.
In trying to do our due diligence as a council, which is taking in the concerns of the community as a whole, I've always thought that there, the best forms of legislation that you can initiate has to take into account the industries that are most impacted and trying to get feedback and input from those, those groups. And honestly, I think that what Del Marva poultry industry has put forth in your best management practices, suggestions, goes, is a very huge step towards trying to resolve the issue as a whole. What I would like to see, and I think the council would probably want to see, would be that some type of firm recommendation from the Del Marva poultry industry, something substantial, that we can come to some type of an agreement on what might be best as a whole before it escalates.
Well, the best management practices that our board adopted in June are those we can live with. They deal with setbacks or separations, I don't know the technical difference between new chicken houses and the property lines, new chicken houses and the center of the public road, and there's another condition in there. We adopt, well, there's a requirement for buffers, vegetative buffers. We can live with those as an organization.
Okay, okay. Any other?
Yeah, this is the, at least the second one that I'm aware of, mega house, mega farm, whatever you want to call it. Somebody mentioned one earlier in Del Marv. The one in Pittsfield that we talked about a couple weeks ago, has that been addressed, the concerns?
I'm not sure which one that is.
Do you know which one it is, Joe?
But describe mega farm for me. I think I know what you mean.
You were involved in it, Jack, a couple weeks ago. And they were really concerned about the buffer and beside them, they had a farm, but it was a mega farm around the Pittsfield area.
I'm sorry, I do recall. Friendship Road, outside of fifty.
Yes. And what is also interesting is that one, and from what I understand, this one, they're non-residents that are building these.
They'll be residents when they get them built. I suggest we have a work session and get their best management practices.
Yes. I have to agree. I think the council does have copies of those. Make sure we have the most current version.
Use the June two thousand and fifteen version.
Right. So you probably have that electronic file, and I believe there's copies probably on your desk here, but you're right, we'll certainly re-review it. And we've had a lot of good input from the community on this, and all of that information has been forwarded to the council members for review as well. Really appreciate you coming in and helping to educate us a little bit more and clarify some of the specific issues in depth, and you did an excellent job, both of you.
We look forward to working with you.
Any other council questions, comments? No? Thank you, gentlemen.
Good seeing you, Bill.
Jack, you get to stay around.
I do, I'm lucky.
If I can say it, have a joyous Christmas.
You too, yeah. Very good.
Yep.
Now, you're going to have Keith Hall here, too, right? There he is. How are you, gentlemen?
Thank you, sir.
Because it's been going, I remember back in two thousand and six, it was mandatory that it be finished in two thousand and eight.
Congratulations.
Or ten, maybe ten.
I'd like to say where you left off. That's where we're at today.
We waited for you, John, to come back.
With the elections and the change in the administration, it was felt best by Wycomico County Council back in August of two thousand and fourteen. At which point, to move away from discussion of the comprehensive plan, move away from discussion of the comprehensive plan, not so much given that there was only a few legislative sessions left from the sitting council at the time, but also because of elections that were coming up at the state level as well.
Excuse me, you can certainly, you're very welcome to step out in the hall if you'd like, then. You'd be surprised how that projects. Thank you.
Therefore, where we're at today is what we wanted to really present with you, is talking about the work program, going back a few steps for new council members, as well as returning council members, but also for the viewing audience at home. You are correct, the Maryland Antifa Code has a requirement that comprehensive plans used to be required to be reviewed every six years. to be required to be reviewed every six years. Subsequently, in the time that we've been preparing this document, that legislation now has been modified by the state to go up to a 10-year period. However, just because it's a mandatory review does not mean it's also a mandatory update. What we've seen since 2006, not dating any of us, but some new planning requirements, extensive planning requirements coming down from the state. We currently have an adopted plan. Our plan is back from 1998. However, it is in compliance with all planning requirements. The main one being that was before this county council back in 2009, was the adoption of a county-wide water resources element, which we did integrate into the plan. Subsequently, since that time, we've worked with the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is the appointed body that's responsible for preparing or developing the comprehensive plan update for the county. And that is through annotated code because we are a charter county. That's how it is. So beginning in 2008, 2009, we began working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, started to do the planning development efforts, which included extensive amount of public outreach, as well as vetting and working through Planning and Zoning Commission work sessions, which I think there was approximately 40 of them, as well as Jack and I in the Planning Department store always being open for anybody that wanted to come in and talk about the plan, the development of the plan, or adding additional language, or concerns about any language that's in there. So moving forward, as we got closer to 2014, the Planning Commission went ahead and started their approval process, which is more of an informal approval. It is not approved by resolution. That is what this governing body does as a county. You adopt the comprehensive plan. However, the Planning and Zoning Commission, before they forward any plan for your consideration, like to get some type of consensus or what we call favorable recommendation, that they're comfortable with the plan as it's developed, that they feel it's been vetted, they've had a public hearing, and only after which will it come to the county council. While that time happened back in March of 2014, subsequently, there was some conversations going back and forth about some various elements of whether or not that weren't in the draft at the time that should be included in the draft. The main one was the priority preservation area element. We'll get into more detail about these as we continue with work sessions, just like the capital improvement budget. We're not asking for any action today, which is getting caught back up to speed. However, it finally did hit the council table as amended with a priority preservation area element, which is slightly representative of the previous administration, and that would be probably about July of last year. Subsequently, we've had elections. I think everybody's wanted to see what the tone of the state was, especially as it related to the mantra, "We're open for business," and as it related to the Maryland Department of Planning. Under the previous administration, we'd never seen such strict guidelines come out of the Maryland Department of Planning over the previous eight years as I had over the previous 15 years in the state of Maryland. So I think now that we've had a chance to take a breather, and we're moving forward, it's a perfect time to be back in front of this legislative body. Again, the role of this body is to not only review, but ultimately adopt. However, there's also a role of the county executive. You want a plan that you have consensus of the Planning Commission, ideally, the county council, and the county executive. While there may be subtle differences, you don't want to see glaring disparities. And why does this matter? Well, why the executive has no veto power? This is a policy document. However, there are components of it that will potentially lead to regulatory changes. And that being going in and once adopted, if there are recommendations to make revisions into the zoning code, for example, changing a setback of whatever use it may be, that would happen again in front of this body, which has the legislative power, but also the executive then has a role. So we feel as we move forward in this discussion, there is no rush, we are in compliance. It will take whatever time it will take to make sure that the council is comfortable, as well as the executive, to move forward with this plan in a manner that ultimately leads to adoption. There are some outstanding issues that still have to be resolved, and this is where we're going to have to roll up our sleeves. For approximately a year and a half, the county, both executive and the council, were working on trying to figure out the septic tier map, or the septic bill or the growth tier map, excuse me. And that is state legislation that has tremendous amount of imposition on the type of residential development that goes on in the county and based on how it's going to be served by sewer. That is something that the council and the executive will have to work towards achieving. This is a time where that discussion could take place concurrently with the comprehensive plan because ultimately, the role of the Maryland, well, the role of the state is said. If you choose to adopt, which it is voluntary, whether or not the county adopts a tier map, if you choose to adopt, ultimately, it ends up in the comprehensive plan. Just so we fully know, and we'll talk about more in detail, since we have not adopted a tier map, we're under the most restrictive imposition as it relates to the ability to ask for no more than seven residential subdivision lots as part of any subdivision.
The process, Keith, be that we should look at the tier map first and resolve that issue, and then simply, from there, we're on third base, right?
That's my recommendation to the council and to the executive, is that first we've got to decide, you have to decide, do you want to do a tier map? And if there's consensus amongst the council that you feel the time is right to do the tier map, and that we do want to take some local autonomy back as it relates to our ability to use our own zoning density and development standards, this would be the time. And then we're going to have to decide what it looks like. Last time around, working with the council, it's my recollection, and it wasn't so much of to tier map or to not tier map, it was what does the tier map look? And that's fortunately where we've got a comprehensive plan that has a draft land use component that will help guide these discussions, but also fortunately, when the Planning Commission took up this endeavor in 2008, they decided to use the 2004 zoning as a starting point. So there's not a lot of disparity, there's not a lot of change. We've worked closely with the municipalities. We know where they want to grow. We know what the water and sewer plan is, and we know what the companion documents are. So our goal is to try to ensure some type of consistency across all these documents.
I think the problem before was that the state, it was sort of like double talk. The state says, yes, we want you to have your own tier map, but your tier map has to agree with what the state wants to have as a tier map for your county. And it was, I mean, it made it absolutely impossible. So I believe now, as you said, things have changed. I think the environment is a lot more friendly, a lot more open to local economy. And I certainly would like to, I guess, maybe start with a tier map as opposed to the comp plan. You guys bring this up to your elbows before.
I don't know which gate first, chicken or egg.
I'll say this is not a mega plan. This is just a plan.
So would that, do you think, be the best route to take, to try to iron out this tier map issue?
Sure.
And then we simply just slip it into a comp plan, right?
Exactly. It's not to say that, you know, this is a, the comprehensive plan has 14 different chapters, and it's not to say that all chapters are important. However, when you get right down to it, really what you're looking at is to try to make sure you've got a land use plan that can accommodate future growth and development that tries to minimize incompatible uses, as we're hearing the discussions going over chicken houses and the location of chicken houses, but also affords property owners the ability to develop their land at the maximum extent possible to our current rules, regulations, plans, and programs. So I think staff, from a staff perspective, we are ready to work with the council, as well as the executive, rolling up our sleeves, figuring out what this tier map is. And I do concur with the council president, I think the time is right, and if something should change, comprehensive plans are amendable. It's not something that just sits on the shelf that can never be touched until the next review period.
Logistically, how do you want to do this? Work session at each council meeting, upcoming council meeting? Do you want to do actual, specific work sessions, separate work sessions, special meetings? How do you want to do it?
It depends on the workload that's involved in each individual council meeting. I would have no problem with having a council, having a discussion on the tier map at every council meeting, because I'd like to get this done by July 1st at the very latest. I can't imagine, this can't go, this could go on beyond six months.
We are expecting call.
Somebody said naive back there.
If you notice, the department, staff did not come with an adoption schedule. That is based on the consensus, again, of the council feeling comfortable. However, we've gone through this, we've tried various different options, and I think the most important point moving forward with the tier map is, it is a different climate than at Applestown. And I think, again, any efforts we can make through the various committees we've all sat on, we've all heard, as it related to the imposition or the regulatory actions of this bill and how it usurps local planning and zoning authority, every rural property owner said the same thing. Give me as many alternatives as you possibly can. It doesn't mean that they're all going to pan out, but do not eliminate any more. If we have time, I think it would be important to keep the executive involved as closely as possible.
Yes.
You know, because I think that's some of the problems we had, there was a separation there, and we decided we needed a joint tier map. Well, that's our recommendation as we move forward, that these discussions aren't just taking place with the seven of you.
Right.
It's inclusive of staff and the county executive, so that we're all seeing the same thing, we're all hearing the same thing at the same time.
Right. And now, you guys, you all can get us the information that we'll need to begin this process. I don't know, I know that they had four or five different maps of Waukamaka County showing different soils, et cetera. I'm not quite sure what really pans out as to be effectively beneficial.
I think let staff compile the information as we're moving forward, and whatever additional information that comes up out of any work sessions, we'll continue to gather that and present to the council. I think as we move forward, my recommendation is, the starting point is, let's look at what the tier map should look like, based off the intent of the state legislation. However, let's also try to look at alternatives that would expand our opportunities to increase development in those most restricted tiers.
Be sure and keep the theory of downzoning out of it as much as possible.
Yes.
Without question.
Could I add just one other caveat with that? The, Keith referenced the land use plan. The land use plan is sort of a composite of all the other chapters. And so while you may lead with the discussion on the tier map, ultimately, the tier map should be consistent with the plan.
That's a good point, Jack.
So, so we will, if it's okay with you, we'll sort of be the conscience, because we know what's in there. And if discussions on the tier map start to diverge wildly from the Planning Commission's recommendation, we'll raise our hand and say, okay, if you go there, that has other implications as well.
Well, that's a very good point. Should we start with the land use plan element, I'll use the term "element" in the comp plan, and then develop our tier map?
How about we do, you're right, the two together, because the planning, because the Planning Commission recommended to you a tier map that was consistent with the comprehensive plan. We believe in that we have sort of a hybrid approach that we can raise this time around that may be acceptable to the state, but we'll start with the draft land use plan, compare that to the tier map, and start the discussion then.
Perfect. Should we start at the next meeting?
Yes, we can start at the next meeting. I don't see pending issues coming up.
Great.
All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, as always.
Look forward to being back. And just remember, Keith has an outstanding offer here to read the plan to you.
Only upon request. If you go past July.
Yeah.
That's the second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The surface three, I think we should probably do in the conference room, gentlemen, just to, we have a little bit more, a little more flexibility, okay? So that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the open work session so that we can go to a closed work session.
Close work session?
Yes.
Second?
Pardon the favor?
Come in.
Pardon?
Come in. Thank you, everyone.